You can always turn. All right, so we're going to call to order our regular board meeting, 6:00 PM, September 25th, 2024. Our first order, first things first, we've got a few things on our agenda. And any of you from the audience that's speaking tonight, we ask that you go to the table and use the microphone so that people online can hear you. And all board members try to speak loudly and clearly so everybody can hear us. Is anybody else recording?
Yes, we are recording.
So our first order of business is an A and R, Rear Mill Road, Russell Morton.
And I just got a call from him that they can't make it, they're stuck in traffic, so.
I think if you have questions, we don't have to endorse it.
Yeah.
So he's subdividing the lots on the right into A and B. And it's a limited industrial area.
Oh, they're just separating.
And they both say not a building lot.
Yeah. In your folders, you've got the map, right? That whole industrial. Towards Summers. But he is not telling the enforcement until he uses. Have to come back.
That says not a building lot.
Therefore.
Changes for use, he's come back and.
No, we're just, I'm just discussing it. I don't know if you want to discuss it or not. How's the applicant here?
So I think the way that we approach is if we have concerns, we're not going to endorse it since he's not here. But if we think it's fine and meets the bylaws, then we can endorse it.
Okay, so. He has no frontage on any road in Hampton. So it's not a building lot which he's spiked out.
Right.
Okay. So. The only question I would have is what's he doing it for? But it's his prerogative to be able to do it.
Right. Agreed.
Can you figure out where Russ's house is on this?
There is, but go ahead. So his property, he goes into East Long Meadow.
Yeah.
And he's also into Summers here.
Yeah.
So where he has.
Go ahead.
But his house, I know where his house is. Yep, but that's, okay, so that's. Okay, so it doesn't abut it at all. Actually, there's really, I don't believe anything that abuts to this.
Okay.
This here. In East Long Meadow, abuts a piece of property that used to be Forbes Garden Center, and they're now clearing that. Okay, for some type of development in East Long Meadow. Okay, so what the plan is, don't know. Okay, with Ross, you know, with this.
Any concerns?
No.
Great, some other questions?
I move that we endorse the A and R for Mr. Russell Morton on Rear Mill Road.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. All right, our next order of business. 5:30 Glendale Road discussion with Rory Walker.
There is a microphone if you feel you want to use it.
If you'd like me to use it, I'd have to do so.
They can hear you.
If you don't mind, just put it on just for the people that are online, just in case, please.
Again, good evening. I'm a member of the chairman, I'm Rory Walker. Thank you very much for taking the time to meet today. The reason why I'm in this meeting, seeing that, is to listen to feedback and comments from yourself on a new system design. Before I go into the new system parameters, I want to go over a history of the project and what has occurred two days. This started back in 2021, when I went in front of the planning board, select board, and conservation commission to introduce this project at a high level. To get overall feedbacks, that was involved with an A and R, certainly an R and R, submitted a consult call in March of 2022. Shortly after that, we filed an A and R with the planning board itself, which was endorsed in September of 2022. The A and R approval was done in November of 2022. Last November, we submitted our formal notice of intent to the conservation commission. Which was then unfortunately denied in July of 2024. Shortly after, I requested to revoke the special court application without prejudice. Which takes us to today. So again, understanding the concerns of the conservation commission, as well as the members of. I have come up with a new design that I would like. I'm going to do that. As an overview, the system size has been reduced from what was a 4.92 megawatt system to a 2.66, so a 54% reduction. I have removed a rating to its entirety. Which included the access road. The area of disturbance, which was previously 21 acres, is now reduced to just 12 acres of disturbance. The tree clearing was 12 acres and now 3 acres. I removed 1,200 plus linear feet of access road. This new application would not require any waiver setbacks from the board or from the conservation commission itself. I have removed the aspect of the dual use whereby agricultural services would be utilized inside the fenced area. There was their concerns about that, understood. This new design would allow for wildlife access through the site, which the previous design did not allow for. With regard to conservation mission, I still intend to redo the riverfront restoration plan that was previously submitted. I will include that in the new design. And lastly, the, as I understand, there is currently a part of the town with regard to energy storage. And the intent is to comply with the new law. What I add from here again is a little, see again, overall rendering of what the system would look like as it is proposed. The clearing would occur in this area, which I indicated with mouse on the upper right hand side, along with the area to the right of the track. That's three areas. Again, with the intent of showing you these images, just to get feedback about any comments or questions that you may have. Or you've got it for final engineering.
You gonna bring it up?
Yes. Just Rory, just to get you current with information from our perspective. We received confirmation from the town council that the ridge line and hillside sections of the town's bylaws would apply. So that's section six. So. The connection there would be, you know, looking at your earlier plans, which of course I've had. You know, the threshold being you're over 600 feet, those are the one of the criteria for that. Rule to require some review. So 600 feet, there was also a slope designation, I think at the time, the slope also applied. So I don't know in this, in this new rise view, if you're still at that 600 plus feet of elevation without seeing the detail.
The elevation likely did not change.
Right, so the eraser is still in it, okay. So that's something that. You know, the ridge line and hillside. Committee, which is myself and Christina, is a subcommittee of the planning board, would go through the process of doing that review. I would also think as part of that, there's three or four pages of. Content in the bylaws that I would think likely we would want time bond to take a look at. Probably very, I would think similar to what work they've already done. And. The first step in that process is you as the applicant would file an application to have the review done. And upon receiving the application, Christine and I have 35 days to complete the review. And that's broadly the process that we would, we would go through when you're. At that stage in the project, so. So we, there is a, you know, a history, of course, in town of doing the ridge line hillside reviews. I'm going to gather some of that information. It's possible we might also have someone else join us, rather than just the two of us, we might have maybe another board member join us. So that's, I guess, new information to you as part of the process. We didn't get confirmation of that until late July. That that rule would apply, since it's not within what you looked at, which was kind of the solar bylaw section, so.
Understood, sir. I was actually, Adam, attorney, did make me aware that I would have to go through the ridge line.
Okay.
Review.
Okay.
Yes, if the intent is to do that prior to going back to the planning board, like that's what we're going to do.
Okay. All right, we'll have to. Think about timing and as a, as a next step, based on what, what you're looking at moving forward with. And where this kind of, where this review best fits in kind of our overall, you know, review of the project. But that's the, that's the. For the criteria, I'd say, it does have that 35 day.
I have no issue with any review that the.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's, I appreciate that, so we'll look, we'll look at this and as you go forward, we'll, we'll kind of. Think more closely about timing and how to, how to make it happen, I would say, okay.
Thank you.
So if you, if I can, Rory. In regards to Patrick's comment about Ridge and Hillside, page 51. So if you want, that's where it is. So that I would suggest that as you design this, you review those, okay?
This is in the town and, uh, town and bylaws.
It is in the zoning bylaw, not the general bylaws, but in the zoning bylaw, okay? So basically, it falls within the Ridge District. But there is some specifics for the design that you would have to follow. And then, then you would actually have to, we would, I'm saying we would. Members of Ridge and Hillside would go out and review what, what you're proposing before you actually do go and put a shovel in the ground.
Got it, okay.
You said there would be no fence around that so wildlife could go through?
Sir, there would be, let me go back. In the previous design, we had a fence around the entire system.
Correct.
The way that they show them right now, we just have a fence around a ray in the top right. And the fence around the bottom right, for security measures, the road will be open and any of that, so. There won't be wildlife, but just the arrays for security and fire purposes would be included for the security.
Do you have an idea of what type of fence you would have?
I could give you specifications, sir. It's like an eight foot chain link fence, that would be a standard. With again, whatever specifications the board would require.
I believe there's a requirement in the bylaw. So in the zoning bylaw, there will be a requirement for solar.
Got it.
Which is page 114. That's where it starts.
For the fence specific.
No, for the whole.
Just for the whole.
So you. You, you, your, your site needs to comply with these.
That is the intent, with every single bylaw is noted. We have a condition or the.
The conditions, exactly. Hundred foot setbacks. I'm going to tell you right from the get go with me, going to be sacrosanct, and not violate them.
Got it.
Okay. If you decide to. Ask for. Additional cutting, okay? Then I would like to see. A plan for the cutting. It has, there's even a size of a tree, 10 inch caliper or bigger, okay? Trees that should be left. So that plan should show what, what, if you will, what trees are larger than 10 inch. Also. The other thing is. I'm going to say. The battery storage concerns me, right now. We don't have a bylaw for it. That's a, that's, that's a big concern with me, okay? We don't have. Granted, you did drop the size down from 4.92 to 2.66 meg. So I would need to really review that and see how big of a battery storage you're looking to put in there. So those are some of the things that, that, that do concern me.
Just trying to, on that note, sir, as I understand, the mortgage form is done sometime in February, early March. I don't see myself being done by that time, so.
Okay.
I will probably go to ask the mortgage terms in effect, therefore will comply with the bylaw. That's the intent.
All right, okay, yeah, so this, this committee has work to do on that.
Regarding the Ridge Line Hillside, Rory, why don't we agree that. We'll communicate to you that we've got our. Our members all set to do the review, so the 35 day clock doesn't start clicking, and so you can send in your application and we'll be ready to go.
If you would let me know that, that would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no other comments. I thank the board very much. I just, the intent was to come, I've not had a chance to speak with you during the initial possibility, except for the first meeting. So any comments or questions or like, like John said, thank you very much for those. I comply with the bylaw prior to. Again, we'll hold the Ridge Line Hill District review prior to our formal admission, board of conversation.
And, and, and I'm going to make a comment, you're asking, what you're asking is for a solar. Energy system that's been situated in a area that I think you've heard from previous meetings. That is a very sensitive area. I think sitting here in front of you is your neighbors, okay? And one of the things is, is that they're made, they made their comments, okay? I think additionally, because it is a sensitive area, we're going to look, I'm, I'm going to say I would look for some type of monitoring that goes on. In case of heavy metals, metals that'll be, you know, I don't know. I don't know how much deterioration of the panel will occur over years. I can't answer that, I don't think anybody can. But there will be some deterioration. We know that there's metals being used on the framework, aluminum. They might be anodized, but the anodization, anodized aluminum will eventually start to break down. And there may be the contamination issue, so we may ask for ongoing monitoring of the water.
Sir, understood, and just on that, you are very well put that there's this sensitive area. So in addition to go in front of the ridge line, it's my intent to meet with any and all individuals that have dress concerns. I have lists, and so, because I don't want to come from the board and have individuals that are just angry at me. It doesn't do anybody beneficial, so my intent, just please know that I will meet these individuals at their convenience and discuss their concerns. I may not be able to solve that, but I will have heard them out in a manner that is, be able to articulate it, prior coming back to you. That is what I think.
Thank you. That's all I really have.
Again, thank you, John.
Can you share this slideshow with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Just so we have, thank you. Other comments from the board?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Rory.
We hear a motion to close our regular board meeting. I move that we close the regular board meeting.
I'll second that.
I'll do this.
Aye. Aye.
Four persons that they want to resign.
I was just.
Oh, all right. Sorry. We got one minute.
All right, we're going to call to order our public hearing case 2024 H, September 25th, 2024. Introduction of the Planning Board members, Mattson, Pixley, Chair, Christina Brodeur, Pat Coyne, David Demers, and John Matthews. Our statement of authority. The planning board is established under chapter 48 of the general laws of Massachusetts and acts in compliance with chapter 48. Under the zoning bylaws of the town of Hampton, chapter 41 governing the submission and approval of plots proposed. The subdivisions and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Hampton, Massachusetts. Our legal notice. Hampton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 25th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. In the townhouse, 625 Main Street, Hampton House. For all persons interested in proposed amendments to the Hampton zoning map. Great Horse requests a zone change from the residential four, residential six to Gulf Recreational for parcel 22177000. 38.6 acres, parcel 1712000, 236.76 acres. Parcel 17119000, 4.5 acres, and parcel 17116000, 12.25 acres. All parcels owned by the farm at Great Horse LLC. Information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for review by the public during normal business hours. For the board, Madison Pixley, Chair of the Hampton Planning Board, published in the Wilbraham Hampton Times on September 5th, and September 12th, 2024. Reports received from other town departments and agencies, the conservation commission stated. They will need to be informed before any work takes place on any of the parcels as they contain resource areas. Town clerk reported all taxes are paid. Once we open up um for public comment, we ask that every, all persons speaking identify themselves. And. For now, we'll have the applicant's presentation. Please.
Ready to use this?
You probably gotta turn it on, yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the planning board to find in this South Stratum. I'm an attorney with Patera Law. We saw mental, here on behalf of. Farm at Great Horse LLC, with my Calabria fancy and representative of the Alkendakay and Natche. Of uh, farm at Great Horse, Great Horse. We're here for a public hearing this evening on our request for a favorable report. To the hand and town meeting, on a request for zone change. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for happily describing the details of the zone change. Save me uh some time here, but it is, you've identified the parcels, we're looking for a change from. Um, bar four and our six to golf recreation. The location is able to have a farm on the westerly side of. The. I think the main question. By the board, and there's maybe by which requesting zone change. Primary reason for the zone change is to enable us to locate, relocate. Uh, the golf course maintenance to the current, current new size, right on the Lowerham Road. As you're driving toward Lowerham, on Lowerham Road, on the right side, very visible, it's in the middle of the golf course. And despite um. Uh, Mr. Antonacci and that greatly changed us up for this. Maintenance shed, uh, the legal rollopedic to the golf course. Uh, they would prefer to move it to uh farm property. At, at Great Horse Farm, there's plenty of available space. It's more consistent with the current use of the property. Uh, however, because it is deemed an accessory use to a golf course. And the property is currently used on the residential, uh, we would be unable to engage in. That use on Great Horse Farm property, um, unless it's used on the golf recreation. One important piece you mentioned, conservation commission being consulted, any use would have, after the re-zoning, any use. Um, whether it be relocation of the maintenance shed or any other use, would have to come before this board again. Either on site plan amendment or special permit, Golf Recreation District is a fairly restrictive district and. Virtually any use requires further review by this board. What would we be giving up by um changing the zone from residential to. Golf recreation, we would be giving up an azubrite residential use, um, the ability to. Subdivide and develop the residential on that property. That's right, without further permitting. One question that I've heard anecdotally, which I'd be happy to address is with respect to. What use, certain uses, what uses are not permitted. I believe if you review the bylaw and use chart. An amusement use is not permitted in the golf recreation district. There's no desire to engage in amusement use, but. It is not permitted, should it be rezoned, golf recreation. Uh, again, the request. Due to time issues uh with respect to fall town meeting, we are respectfully requesting that you. Hearing from the public that you close the hearing this evening and issue a favorable report to town meeting. As expeditiously as possible, preferably this evening. Uh, we thank you for your time and we're happy to answer any question.
Go ahead. Thank you. The, for all of the residents that are here, um, wondering. This meeting here tonight is just about. The rezoning from the R four, R six to golf recreational. That's what we are limiting the scope of this meeting to, okay? We're not gonna pontificate, we're not gonna think about if they're gonna put another Sunny's there, okay? If you're interested, that comes at a later date when they ask to do something, okay? In other words, to develop the property. That will come at a later date, whether it's an amendment to a special permit that they have already been issued. Or they decide to have a new special permit, okay, for this particular property. Is that clear?
And if I could, if I could comment just to um that comment. We're also seeking a recommendation. This ultimately is decided at the town meeting.
Correct.
And we are seeking, we would like a recommendation favorable to the planning board. That recommend the. A positive, negative, or no recommendation is not necessarily preventing from going to town meeting and. The citizens are going to decide on their request, but we obviously um, out of this board's opinion are seeking a favorable recommendation. To touch.
Are there options to relocate that maintenance facility within the existing? This acreage that the golf course uses is replacing, that's an alternative to this, if this were not to work out, maybe you've looked at those in the past.
Yes, they looked at the best location and haven't been able to find a suitable location on the existing property and. Given the nature of the, uh, it's. There is a significant amount of property um on the farm. It's used as, I believe, a neighbor of earth for, for agricultural purposes. Um, courses and, and um. Farming. A shed of this size that we're talking about is. Would be. Work better with the aesthetics of the existing barn than within um, on the golf course. Hopefully that's responsible.
And will the. Will the new shed be much larger than the existing shed, or is it sort of the same footprint? Is, is it much different?
We, we don't have the specifics. We imagine to be similar, but again, will be before this board with a specific.
We.
Plans for that.
For us to talk about the shed where it's placed. Alls you want is favorable recommendation or unfavorable or no recommendation. From the planning board tonight to, for a rezone. That's all you're looking for.
You'd like favorable.
I understand, yeah, yeah, and, and not to, not to circumvent anybody's questions or anything. But the, I'm gonna explain this, the real meat and potatoes comes down to. The next step, if they get the approval at town, at here and then at town meeting. To rezone this piece of property. The real meat and potatoes comes to where that building, the size of the building. How it's gonna be situated, they have to do the traffic patterns in and out. So that's when the real, the hard decisions become really hard, okay? And that's when the public comment will start to take effect. I don't wanna circumvent anybody thinking that we're going to just ramrod this through. Your real decision comes, if it's approved as a zone change, then when they come back and they ask for. A placement of a building, that's when the planning board would really have to say yes, no, or whatever. The chairperson has to recognize, I'm sorry.
Any other questions from the board before we open to the public?
Pardon me?
Any other questions from the board?
Uh, no.
No.
I'd like to just make sure we limit it to the scope, cause we can go off. The road and start to really get into some. Comments, discussions that really don't pertain to this right now.
Right. Okay, can you just stand up and say your name and address and actually just come up to the microphone, please? Microphone.
On if you would, please. It's okay, don't worry, we're gonna make a star out of you tonight.
Hi, my name is Laura White. I live at seventy six Old Gold Drive. And I'm wondering if the zone changes for the entire piece of property or just what's needed for the. New shed and maintenance areas.
And as it's been proposed to us, okay, it appears to be almost the complete property. But just not the maintenance shed, a section of it, it's going to be the complete. Everything that they own, that they, they own, they own many parcels, if you will, okay? You know, so. It will be all of them.
Thank you. Yep. Please.
Robert Churchill, seventy five Old Gold Drive. I'd like a definition, your definition of golf recreation.
Okay. So my definition, my definition comes right out. Yeah, comes right out, comes right out of the bylaw, okay? Do you, do you want me to read it? Okay. So basically, uh, page forty two. Um, the golf recreational district is intended for commercial golf course and normal and unusual accessory uses. As permitted according to the table of use regulations six point oh. So then I would go to table six point oh, which is. On page twenty six. Okay, and I would look down through the column of golf recreational and see what is an allowed use using this paper. That, that okay? Um, yeah, it recognizes.
Sorry, I couldn't see you.
So this change of zoning, so right now. There is no access to the golf course. Without crossing Raymond Drive, unless they're planning on trail registered vehicles. How is all that equipped, if I get from the farm?
We. Right now, we can't answer that. That will come, that'll come at a later date.
Understand, that has to do with rezoning. This is a decision you're making.
No, no, that doesn't right now. Okay, that's fine.
Hey, Mr. Jack, I'm from ninety one Old Gold Drive. Uh, with all due respect, Mr. Matthews, it has everything to do with deciding whether to grant the change or not. We've been told by the attorney that this is going to be because they need a shed. I don't think the Astrodome uses two hundred and ninety two acres for a shed. Now, what I would like to submit, just so that, cause I walked into this room and I ended up having PTSD from what we went through before. To say that these people are a bad actor and to sit there and I agree, let's do things according to your Bible. According to your Bible. This board here has to decide. And we don't have the information. We don't know anything. If I was sitting here on the board, I, I, you'll be able to speak when I.
Go ahead, yeah.
If we had the information, why do you need two hundred and ninety two acres? Again, what's the location? Oh, well, because we have two hundred and ninety two acres. They're gonna put it down at the cul-de-sac on Old Gold Drive. They can put it over on Raymond Road. There's all those, I understand, are going to be after fact, but they have stated here. That they are doing this solely to relocate a shed. I heard teaching every one of you to determine is two hundred and ninety two acres. Do we grant a favorable? Or would we not be better served just to table it like you did with the developer that preceded us? That you had questions, he went back and sent them back to show us a plan, a location, what it is. And then we can make a good decision for our town.
Okay. Your pen's stuck in there.
I'd like to give you this, just for those of you that don't know the history, these people are bad actors. That's a breakdown of what I went through when I said I suffered from PTSD back in two thousand seventeen. So if you all would like to read that, I think it would help educate you on how some of us feel here.
What are they gonna do about all the noise? The dropping of the trash cans and the diesel trucks tapping for us. I mean, when he came here, he bought that property, he knew it was a farm. Now we're gonna turn it into a bunch of noise and traffic. I've been over to Sunny's place. I've heard them drop those trash bins. I hear them now and there's only one. What are we gonna do when there's more? Just bring it to everybody else's attention.
Do you have a, do you wanna make, maybe make a comment about why? Some, all the parcels need to be, why you're looking to rezon all of them?
Sure, um, so as noted before, we, we haven't determined. Location, the setbacks, the design for the storage shed because until of this process.
Right.
And have it, we can't, it's not, it's not, it doesn't make sense to determine. The location, um, and you can't, you can't do spot on.
Please, hold it down, please, go ahead.
There are large parcels and you generally can't rezon a particular area of one parcel. Um, so. The other thing is, and we did, the intent for the zone change. Um, is to relocate the storage shed. There was a comment that, um. We represented that that's solely the use, solely the purpose. We don't, the, we don't know what the future of that parcel holds, but we know what it does not hold, which is. Um, amusement. Uh, it also, um. If we decide to relocate some of the farming aspects. Currently, the only azubrite use is subdivision and residential development and. Um, resources in the business of golf course, not necessarily in the business of residential redevelopment. So in connection with, um, the relocation of the shed, it makes sense to have the two largest parcels neighboring one another. Zone with the same consistent use, which will allow flexibility around the operation of the golf course. Uh, and then we'll, um, preclude the, um, residential, as a right residential redevelopment. of the golf course, uh, and then we'll, um, preclude the, um, residential, as a right residential redevelopment.
Two seventy-five Wolverham Road. Uh, my property abus the largest parcel of Kenny land and grow up in that house. I agree with the sentiment that was echoed here tonight. The smaller rezoning of, uh, the parcels that designated area for maintenance would be more appropriate. And I offer just that because, um, for several years now, obviously since twenty eighteen, everybody that abus on Wolverham Road have had newer piles. We've had massive, massive piles of soil, which were recently moved. Uh, we've dealt with flies. Um, and aesthetically, their building is not attractive on Wolverham Road, so I wouldn't blame them for wanting to move it. But I certainly wouldn't wanna look on my, back of my home, which is a substantial home that I spent many, many years developing, and I don't think others would to just uh, view a maintenance building. Now, I understand that that's for a future discussion. However, you know, not understanding all the uses for hundreds of acres of land. I think they could designate more specifically something that's closer, the Norman Kenny's original property, which already has a barn on it, setback. Um, that probably doesn't affect people on Oakdale, Raymond Drive, and those rest that live on Wolverham Road. A steadily with a maintenance building. To be candid, I'd much rather see myself a nice development back there than a maintenance building. So I just ask the board to maybe, uh, have them scale specifically something that was more appropriate before we rezoned all that land. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just don't.
Any other questions from the crowd, comments? Anyone wanna make a motion?
Actually, let's, let's take a vote.
Oh, excuse me.
Just a vote.
Just a vote. Alls you need is a vote to, um, advance this to.
Recommend it. Recommendation to the.
Um, for, to put on the, uh, fall town meeting or special town meeting, however, it's wanna be addressed onto the warrant.
Make a quick comment. Um, I sat on the planning board for a number of years, as John did. And we had, I can recall, two rezoning proposals. Mike Sabaldi came before us after his father and uncle died. They rezoned him the nurseries for business. And then some of the landowners around Mini Mall came to rezone to actually codify what they did. But all that required further action. I think John was a hundred percent right before. You're gonna have a chance to speak at the town meeting. This doesn't make it happen.
Correct.
This just advances the town meeting when you can sit in much more comfortable chairs, the old blue plastic ones at Thornburgis, and get up and speak and hopefully have a bigger proposal. And more neighbors can come then. And then if it passes a town meeting, there's another meeting when any proposal comes back and you as neighbors speaking in either for or against it then and get more information. The process doesn't end here. Everybody stays involved. All this does is, this doesn't approve it. This says, go to the town meeting and let two hundred people speak about it. A better, bigger forum to talk about it. That's all it is. This is a recommendation to come to the board selection, then we have a decision to make on the thirtieth if we're going to put it on the town meeting warrant. That has not been decided yet. We were waiting for the outcome of this hearing. This grants nothing except the next step. It doesn't make it happen tonight. It doesn't guarantee it's going on the town meeting warrant. That's still something for our board to decide Monday night. And then at the town meeting on the twenty-ninth, Tom?
Yes.
Oc- October twenty-nine. The town will vote whether or not to agree to it. You're not giving up any rights tonight. Making your voice heard.
John, what we are furthering is I think the people here have expressed concerns and a lot of negativity. And the board has three choices. They can pass a favorable on the action or they can pass unfavorable, and I'm urging you not to take any action. You can't say what you said is there's a lot of questions that have to be answered. I will never understand what the rush is at the last minute because we have town meetings all the time. If that, I, I think all of us would be in agreement and urge you, quite simply, you voted to take no action. That's it. We can go home and be happy and live to ask the questions and get more, get more specifics. I didn't hear anything here specific other than a cap dance. You know, we need two hundred and ninety-two acres because we don't know where we're gonna put it. But to your point, what's the rush?
And Jack, that is, let me just comment on that, if you don't mind, Matt. Jack, it's a valid point. It is. But like any landowner in town, if I decide to purchase the property next to me and my brother would give up the hayfield, I would have the opportunity to come and ask, hey, this is what I wanna do with it. And I'd have that right, just like any of you do, to bring it to the board.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not disputing that with all due respect. They absolutely have the right, but based upon what we as butters, as, as members of the community, what we know right now and what we had the opportunity to hear, we didn't hear anything. So rather than put it on you to have us leave here pissed off because John, Mr. Matthews, you said it correctly. We'll live to fight another day. You gotta have two-thirds majority in the town meeting. All I'm saying is the appropriate thing for that, your board to do is to take no action. Just take, you don't even need one. Take no action. They can go and get a hundred signatures and they can still, you know, bypass our warrant system. They can do all that and we'll all go to the town meeting. But why, why, what right does any property owner here have to, to tell, tell you when everybody here, I, I only, I haven't heard anybody speak in favor of it, which it kinda says to me, I don't know, there's probably forty of us here. You're on to page two. And we're all speaking against it, but we're not saying, don't do it. We're saying, what's the rush? Why two hundred and ninety-two acres? Where is it going to be located? How are you gonna have access to it? How is, how is our fire department and how is our ambulance if there's a problem? What are all those? Well, you have to wait. You have to pass the bill to know what's in the bill. So all I'm asking you to do is don't take any action. That's all I think is, would everybody agree? These taxpayers.
Yeah, so you say take no action. Don't do anything. That's not what this board is for. This board has to do something, okay? Like you said, we can always just push it down the road. That's not what we do, okay? And to ask the applicant what's he's gonna do with the two hundred and ninety-two acres or the three hundred and thirty or whatever, okay? That comes at a later date where the criteria then will be set. All's, again, I keep going back to this. All's he's asking for is a change in the zone. You are now, wait a minute, wait a minute, I let you speak.
You don't have to be mad, John. We're all here and we're friends.
So my bottom line is that you're asking for something that we don't have any knowledge of now. And will we have knowledge of it when he comes forward with a plan? Yes, at that point in time, we will. And that's when, again, it gets down to the nitty gritty. And that's when you're talking to me about where this is gonna be placed, where this is. I have it right in front of me. Here's where it's gonna be. How the traffic is gonna go from here to there to address the concern about coming across Raymond Drive? How's this gonna? I can't pontificate. I can't. I, I will not, okay? I will not go and explore that right now because I don't know. Until you have a definitive plan in front of you, then you can make decisions. What you've said about this gentleman here before us, Rory Walker, he came before this board and I was not on the board, but he came up in front of Conservation with a plan. And that definitive plan was rejected basically by Conservation. And it probably, and I don't know, because I don't have a crystal ball, it might have been rejected by the planning board. But if they come to us with a plan, meaning Great Horse, and we look at it and we say, we don't agree with that. One, it doesn't meet bylaw. Or two, this is what we want to see as a community. Alls they're asking for is a change. Two hundred, two.
Major change in zoning.
It's, it's a change in zoning, and they have that right as a landowner.
Welcome you to help me out. It is my understanding. Stand corrected. You have three options as a plan. You can take a vote, the vote favorable on the request. You can take a vote, the vote not favorable. And you also can elect to vote and take no action. Which basically is all we're asking you to do. Is this feeling that you have this responsibility to without, with, against an awful lot of people here that are saying, we're confused, we don't understand it, we wanna get it. And you say, and that's why I use it, I don't mean to come and take it. Well, you gotta understand, you gotta pass the bill and it's in the bill. So now we, we rezoned and all of a sudden, the next thing we know, they make an application for another eighteen holes of golf. You know, and I understand that, and they will have to fight that battle. But right now, all we're asking you is a board, is take no action. That's all. Let the towns decide.
If, and well, the thing is, is that if we move it forward to town meeting, a bigger cross-section of the town now has an ability. So then, so then we would vote favorably. We would vote favorably and move it to town meeting.
Vote favorable or unfavorable. If you vote favorable, there are people saying, well, the planning board thinks it's okay, so I guess I'm gonna be.
No, 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 no. We're saying it's favorable that to go to town meeting. We're not.
That's not what chapter forty-eight, section five says. Chapter forty-eight, section five says the planning board must make a recommendation to the town meeting. The recommendation to be favorable or unfavorable, or they can take no action after twenty-one days and it will still vote.
That's correct, and I just want to clarify. I don't think there's such a thing as taking a vote to take no action.
Nothing. You just wait the twenty-one days out.
Correct, but.
Or you have to make a recommendation to the town meeting, and your recommendation is be, is the recommend a favorable zone change, or we recommend an unfavorable zone change. You don't, you don't take a vote to move it to the town meeting.
But a favorable recommendation to move it, move it to the meeting.
Then, then the selectmen, we still have the, have to put it on the warrant, or you can get your hundred signatures or your two hundred signatures. Your only job is to say we favorably, this, the zone change is a favorable recommendations, we believe favorably is for the favorable for the town or it's unfavorable for the town, or do nothing for twenty-one days and let the clock run.
I think start the clock. You have twenty-one days. I agree with Mr. Davenport, those are the choices. Favorable recommendation and unfavorable or no action uh, after the close of the public hearing, it goes to it goes to the town meeting with one of those three results, and we're asking, obviously, for favorable recommendation. We're asking you to close the meeting, the hearing, and you make a favorable recommendation, but it's your choice on what recommendation you make or make them.
An unstable recognition, will it still go to the town meeting?
They would have to get a hundred signatures, right?
No. Well, or the selecting.
Right.
Anyone could correct me if they misunderstood or think I'm misstating it, but if you make an unfavorable recommendation, it will be on town meeting with an unfavorable recommendation from the planner.
So I'm a little confused that, uh, the definition of favorable. So my understanding, a little while ago, was all I'm voting is favorable to put it to the select board. On the zone change itself, okay?
I have a question. Do you have to rezone the whole two hundred and ninety acres? You, you can't do just parcels of that.
That's what, that's what they came forward with.
I know, but you as the board, you cannot change that. Hit the whole two hundreds of. So in the history of Hamden, has there ever been a parcel of land that large that's been rezoned?
Well, if we go back, if you go back, you wanna go way, way back? Let's, let's, I mean, let's talk way, way back. A lot of this land was farmland. So how did it get zoned as residential? So, so again, um, Mr. Keddie's original property, okay, um, was farmland. And he proposed to have a I'm gonna say a two hundred lot subdivision. Am I, I'm looking at you, counselor. Um, I don't, yes. So his proposal was many, many lots, residential, R four. I don't remember how many, but again, Mr. Keddie came in front of the town and had to have that zoned. Whether we did it this way, okay, because I don't know, again, I'm going back. That was probably in the sixties, maybe in the fifties, okay? But there's always been some type of zoning. Um, if you go up the road to Spring House Lane, that, you know, all of these areas were made subdivisions, so they would have had to been zoned.
There was some kind of quote that he said for the storage shed or maybe something else. So I think that's where, for me, as a resident that may be affected, that's where my concern is. Have they really been honest with us because they say they don't have a plan? Please, please, they're professional people. They, they, they have a plan. And I think that's where we're uneasy with is because they're not saying really what's going on.
So if I may, um, and I, I don't know the inner workings of Great Horse or the Antinachis, but any business that you have, okay, has, I'm gonna say a group of people that will make decisions as to what you're gonna do. Um, whether it be Big Y, whether they're gonna build a, uh, another building for a. whether they're gonna build a, another building for a bigger store or it happens to be someplace else or some, some other type of business. Somebody makes those decisions. Those decisions may not be made because of the fact that if they don't get approved, then maybe they go spend their money elsewhere. Okay, meaning the Antinachi family or however Great Horse works. I don't know the inner workings of, of, of the business. So there may be other things that they may want to do. And they say, well, this is a priority for us is to at least get the maintenance building moved and then we'll see about what other monies can come across. I don't know. And I am, I am going out on a limb, understand something. I am not speaking for the Antinachis and how they run their business. I'm not speaking for Great Horse. I'm not speaking for anybody. I'm just trying to justify it in my mind why they're saying I want. Will you stop? He's, I let you talk and you won't. You won't let me talk?
You want to carry the water for them or do you want to listen?
I'm not carrying the water for them.
Yes, you are, John.
Okay. I'm carrying the water for the Antinachi family. Look at my bank account, how big it's grown.
You don't give a rat's ass.
I think a lot of us went here because it was a suburb. And now you're changing the whole development of our area. Just like solar panels changes things. This will change why we need to be out there. It will. I mean, just like Great Horse, I live on, I can hear the music.
Yeah.
Coming from Great Horse. You know, and, and I don't need to be disrespectful, like thank you all for being here as a board, but how many on the board are being affected by the rezoning?
We, we all will be.
No, you're not.
That's why. No, that's why it goes to town.
I know, but are you all, are you all abutting that land?
They clearly have the right to request this.
Yeah.
And if goes to me, it can be denied. If it was denied, they could come back with a, with a proposal on a more specific, on a smaller parcel. I think that's the concern of a lot of the Butters is that once, once the rezoning has occurred, there's simply need to have setback requirements. So they can literally take and put multiple maintenance buildings or other things that could aesthetically affect the town. Because once it's zoned, they'll simply just need to be, have to meet the codes, building codes and zoning setbacks. And I think there is very appropriate parts on that parcel land. And I know like the back of my hand to have rezoned or there's their specified purpose. If it's beyond that, then they can always come forward to the town and say, here's why we need 292 acres. But right where the farm is, and I'm not sure the acreage there for that parcel is probably the most appropriate place to put a structure like this. They already have access to Wolverham Road. They go right down through there. There's a barn there. I think that's the concern for most of Butters is, you know, once, once the zoning changes occur, then they can instruct whatever's appropriate and involve them. And so, and again, I like a lot of things quite candidly that they do. I'm not, I'm not opposed to Great Horse myself personally. I think that they've done some very, very good things, quite honestly. However, you know, if you had had their farm behind your home and you experienced what most of Butters on Wolverham Road have experienced. And it's not like they haven't been bold. Many people on Wolverham Road, permitted use of the farm, totally, okay, permitted use. If you can imagine 400 yards by five or six rows of horse manure, about eight feet tall, and flies coming into your home, a permitted use, that's the concern. They already have zoning for permitted use, perfectly fine. This new rezoning, the permitted use, may not be beneficial to the town. Certainly, probably not to the Butters. It seems appropriate to me that if that's their intent, that they can come. Hopefully, just won't pass the town meeting, that they'll present something as a more appropriate rezoning for that maintenance building. Because it would be better for the town to remove the maintenance buildings off Wolverham Road. Quite honestly. But isn't that something better to be on 290 acres?
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
State your name and where.
Kind of a friendly correction. I don't think there's any setback if you go to a golf course to the district. You got that 100 foot tree buffer, it's only only attaching to the precise golf course itself. Not for the restaurant, not for the regionally established, not for anywhere else. I didn't see any exceptions. And further what John was saying, they can lay out whatever they plan. And if the rezoning is approved, the only limitations are what's in the zone. Of recreational district. It doesn't matter what we're told on our way to getting it approved.
I'm gonna address one more thing since I'm carrying, I've been accused of carrying the water for the Antinachis. Let me explain one thing. I do my research. I've been through this before. Okay, I've been on the planning board when the Antinachis first came into town and started to redevelop the golf course. Okay, I sat through all of the meetings and I took all the flack. And I'm still to get in flack. I don't carry anybody's water. What concerns me more than anything is when they will start to propose what they want to do with this property. If I'm still on the planning board, which I'm sure there's a faction out there would like to see me removed, and I'm sure I probably will be. But the bottom line being is that's when the real control occurs. Okay, you follow the bylaw and you condition the property. You can, you make conditions. What surprises me is everybody is complaining about the horse manure, okay? There's, did anybody report it to the zoning enforcement officer? Was the noise reported to the zoning? Wait a minute, and what, wait a minute, now wait a minute. What was the result of the zoning enforcement officer's finding? So I, I'm not, that's a, it's a question that doesn't need to be answered. This board does not put the bylaws, is not in charge of enforcing the bylaws. That's not this board's decision. We would look at the bylaws that are written and if the, if it fits, then we would be able to approve it.
The answer is to bring everybody up to speed. I tried very hard to stay on business parameters, but John. I go back to recreational overland. I go back to us as a town curdling ourselves, applying for millions of dollars of Massachusetts state money and was in writing saying that we had favorable reaction for water and sewer from Springfield and East Long Meadow. And it was not true, okay? I talked about the starting gate when our own health commissioner and building commissioner, and it was funny because it sounds very similar to what I just heard here. Oh, we're just gonna put, put storage in there. Only afterwards did we discover and it went to the people on Raymond Drive, I think they're still paying, pursuing. So my point is, their actions to the relationship, they do a lot of good things and I, and I support them and I thank them for that. But when the owner, Mr. Antonucci, goes up to my wife and, and my wife says, hey, is there any way you can not start at 6 o'clock in the morning? And he turns to her and says, I'll do what I want. You all should just be happy that I'm not putting condos there.
That's true.
Okay, 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 okay. All right, thank you.
And I didn't want to go down this road. But if we're gonna go over and over and over again, what your responsibility is, your responsibility is not, and I apologize for saying you were carrying their water. I get emotional because I am in my daily vial too.
All right, we're gonna close our comments. Excuse me. Yes, sorry.
Please, have you closed the public hearing?
No. Our board's going to make a recommendation.
I vote, yeah, no, not a motion.
It's a recommendation. It's a recommendation.
Recommendation or, yeah, I recommend.
Excuse me, in the crowd, can we just?
I recommend to approve the rezone. I recommend no decision.
No action.
No action.
No action.
Any others?
I recommend no action.
Thank you.
I recommend no action.
Give it a go, three, no action.
What is it, Joanne?
When I was three, no action.
No action.
Two, I'm assuming, she said. Favorable, so, read it to.
Okay, so. No action.
No favorable recommendation, three to two.
Well, no, it said no action.
But no. I was. The 21 day thing, as Tom said. That brings in the 21 day thing with no action, right, Tom?
Right.
I don't believe chapter 48 allows for a vote of no action. I believe it allows for a vote of favor or opposed or taken.
Hi, Mike, actual procedural grounds would be disclosed to public hearing and said, we'll issue a recommendation or just we'll keep on our advisement but the hearing closes and that starts the war.
All right, I can make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Favor.